I'd like to call to order the September 22, 2011, meeting of the Johnson County Community College Board of Trustees, and we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Terry Schlicht, our role call and recognition of visitors, please.
This evening's visitors include Roosevelt Neal, Madeline Getzinger, Karen Hakey, and Ann Arnaud.
Thank you. This next section on our agenda is the petitions and communications section of the board agenda. It's a time for members of the community to provide comments to the board. Comments are limited to five minutes unless a significant number of people plan on speaking. In that instance, the chair may limit a person's comments to less than five minutes. Presenters may choose to speak either at the first or second petitions and communications section, but not both. And prior to beginning the comments, we'll ask for you to state your name, your address, city, and state. And with that, is there anyone who would like to address the board at this time? All right, if you could move to the podium, please.
My name's John Winter. I live at 209 North Frank in Spring Hill, Kansas. We've all experienced changing to a cheaper brand and found our disappointment filled with disgust. Maybe it's coffee or soda. Tell a Starbucks or a Pepsi devotee that the yellow Always Save label is just as good and cheaper, and they'll laugh you to scorn. Tell one who for three generations has driven a GM vehicle that IKEA will get you there just as well. Or ask a Harley-Davidson rider if they've ever considered a Suzuki. When you find a personal care product that works for you, would you hazard a change? Snap-on tools deliver a reliability that the Walmart motto of satisfaction guarantee can never match with their cheaper products. If so, once again, we find ourselves desiring the quality that we traded and abandoned for less. JCC has striven for excellence. It's one of our values, and the community has come to expect this from the college. For decades, the JCC brand has been top-tier, and we've taken delight, we have all taken delight in being employed within the JCC family. You who have been employed here for 10, 20, or 30 years are very familiar with the phrase "the JCC family." It was the purposeful habit to use this phrase. The experience of the JCC family followed in the wake of how we defined ourselves as a family. It's been years since this phrase has been used. The JCC brand has slipped, and we're not the better for it. We have a great vision here, and we've stated our mission with clarity and with confidence. And our values, they're high, and we bring a commitment to these values, and we aspire to a high standard. This has been the JCC brand, and it still is. Our values tell us which road we will choose to accomplish our mission. The value of excellence stands tall and preeminent among us. This value's been lacking while pursuing an RFP to outsource the custodial department. The budget shortfall for the college should not be carried or sought to be redeemed primarily from one department. This burden needs to be carried campus-wide with its shared impact. The average custodial staff member is among the lowest paid of all the college employees, and we're preparing to ask them to contribute one-third of their salary and half of their benefits so that the college's budget can come more into balance. This is the net result if any of our current custodial employees are willing to accept a job offer from a contract cleaner. The college has put into writing a request that the cost of the contract for cleaning not increase for five years. Thus, a current housekeeping employee will be expected to do the same job if it is offered to them, and do it with the same quality and expertise for two-thirds of the salary, and then accept no cost of living increase for half a decade. Would we approach the faculty with such a proposition? I'd ask, is this the excellence that we strive for? We can do better, especially when considering the human factor. It's been months that this specter has stalked and ravaged the housekeeping department. The mental, emotional, relational components of this department have been largely neglected while scrutinizing budget numbers. All of our staff members who have had the numbers to retire have retired en masse this past July, except one. Our staff's relationships, both at the college and off-campus, have been stressed and eroded with the insecurity and uncertainty of their value to this institution, and the question of whether they will be employed in 30 days or able to continue to provide for the people that are most dear to them and the things that they treasure. The emotional and mental strain is great, and it increases weekly. I myself am accessing professional counseling in an attempt to retain an internal equilibrium that doesn't damage and hopefully does no harm to the people and things in which I've invested my life these last decades. Many of us in this department are at risk because of the lack of excellence and how the outsourcing has been pursued and communicated. The JCC brand has slipped. Our vision, mission, and values are high. They are intact, yet it seems clear that some of our values have not been our central guides while endeavoring to conclude this issue. For more than 40 years, the services provided to this campus through the housekeeping department have been top-rated by every internal survey. Recently, I was approached by management from one of the companies that had bid to replace the custodial department. Among themselves, they agreed that this facility was the best-kept and cleanest campus that they've toured. The college has a sizable investment in the training of our staff, and it shows in the appearance of our buildings. As in other areas of our lives, whether it's our food, our cars, or how we take care of ourselves, we get what we pay for. This custodial department puts high importance on the JCC values, and it shows in the product delivered. This board will hazard predictable dilemmas and known problems when expecting consistent quality while purchasing a cheaper product. The truth, you get what you pay for, will not be mocked. The JCC brand has been and is top-tier. I ask you not to seek temporary budget relief through compromising the long-term upkeep of this campus. This custodial department has demonstrated an excellent track record, and I'd ask the board to reaffirm the college's greatest assets: its people. Our people make the difference. That's what we say, and it's always, may it always be true. For months, the custodial department employee's sense of personal significance to the campus and the college's vision has plummeted, and it continues to slide today. The hourly employees of other departments on campus are observing this outsourcing process and how the invisible lowest-paid among us are treated, and many of them are concluding, will I also be traded and sold for 30 pieces of silver? I thank you for the opportunity to approach you.
Thank you, John. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to the board at this time? Seeing none, we will close the petitions and communications section of this part of the agenda, and there will be another one later this evening. With that, we'll move to awards and recognitions. And Dr. Grove, do you have some good news for us today?
Yeah, Chair Weiss, we have four awards and recognitions tonight. I'd like to invite Christina Wright to the podium, first of all. She is our event manager and VolStar supervisor, and she's going to be recognizing the first two award winners.
Good evening. As you said, my name is Christina Wright. I am the events manager with the Performing Arts Series in the Carlson Center. I've been here since February of this year. For those of you that haven't attended a program in our facility before, not only are you missing out on excellent programming, but you're missing out on engaging with our VolStars, our volunteers, that work. They're not just ushers, they're not just coatroom attendants or greeters, they're really ambassadors for the college. This past year, this past fiscal year, they served at over 177 events in the Carlson Center, from a Performing Arts Series event to an academic theater performance to an outside meeting in Polsky Theater. They served 10,873 volunteer hours with us. They served over 79,000 patrons in our facility. We have around 200 active volunteers, and this program has been in place for the past 20 years, or pretty much since the building opened. According to the Independent Sector Report and Corporation for National Community Service, the value of a volunteer per hour is $21.36. You have to remember that these people, especially our VolStars, while many of them work, many of them are retired professionals as well, but whether they're retired or they work, they're educated ambassadors for the college. These people set up military bases in Antarctica, the first military base we ever had there. They are retired federal agents, retired architects. One of the first architects in the country is a VolStar with us. They're current accountants and schoolteachers. They serve on boards around the community, other volunteer boards, and they also take care of parents, siblings, and children. They're active and engaged in our community, and they do an excellent job of recruiting current students for us, and then also promoting the college. If you take the number of hours they volunteered with us this past year, and then the $21.36 per hour rate, the total value of the VolStar program to Johnson County Community College this past year was a little over $232,000. That's money saved that we're not paying people to be here to work in our facility, but people are volunteering their time to come and promote the college for us. I have two volunteers here tonight, Karen Hake and Madeline Getzinger. Could you please stand? Both of these ladies have been with the VolStar program for the past 20 years, or as they'll say, they were here when the building, they're as old as the building, as they'll tell people, with pride. They were here when the Carlson Center was built. Karen and Madeline were both recognized at our VolStar appreciation banquet last month because they reached their 2,000-hour mark of volunteers. Our volunteers average 50.36 hours per year serving our program. Obviously, these ladies go above and beyond that, and they reach the 2,000 hours of service mark to our organization. That's not just our organization, that's over 2,000 hours of service to Johnson County Community College. So it's, you're not recognizing me or really the Performing Arts Series, we're recognizing the volunteers, the VolStars. Next time you're in our facility and you see them with their red scarf around their neck, please be sure and give them an extra handshake because they do a really good job of representing us. If you could give them a round of applause, please.
Next, I'd like to ask Professor Nita Tabby to come to the podium. Professor Tabby is Chair of the Legal Studies Department, and she will do the next presentation.
Thank you, Dana. It is my pleasure to introduce a person that is very well-deserving an award, and that is the Exemplary Service Award. And the name of the person is Paula Cortez, and I want to tell you just briefly why she is entitled to this award. We in the paralegal program, we teach courses on campus, and we teach them online, and we also teach them by television. And it's through the television that we have worked very closely with Paula. And in 2004, I was teaching an Intro to Law class, and we were teaching it on television, and so I was working very closely with Paula. And oftentimes, I would bring in guest speakers, such as practicing attorneys to talk to us about real estate law, practicing attorneys to talk to us about family law. In this particular semester, I invited Melody Cockrow to come in, who happened to be an assistant adjunct professor for us at the time, and she has a criminal law background. She was assistant prosecutor at Kansas City, Missouri. And she gave, and I'm not underwriting it, a brilliant two-hour presentation on criminal law to our students that was televised. Well, unfortunately, Melody had a massive stroke in 2008 and had to retire, and she recovered, but not completely. And in, and this past August, 2011, she had another massive stroke, but this one was fatal. Her family contacted me because they knew that she had given this presentation a number of years ago, and that we had taped it, and asked if there was any way that we would have a copy of it, this would mean a great deal to her family. So I immediately contacted Paula and said, I know this is a needle in the haystack, you know, to try to find this way back in 2004, and that you clean your materials out like all of us do, but if you could just take 10 minutes to try to find this, this would make a great deal, mean a great deal to the family. This was on a Wednesday afternoon about 4 o'clock. When I came to work the next day, Paula had a message for me saying, we found the tape. And she said, we will have a copy for you tomorrow morning, Friday. I contacted the family that Friday morning, and by noon that day, they had picked up the tape. Needless to say, Paula went way beyond the call of duty. I was just visiting with her now, and she said, it was just amazing that we had that. We had destroyed every other tape that was, every show that was taped that season except for yours. And the only reason we saved yours is we thought that maybe you were going to come back and do it again sometime. So I believe, and I'm sure all of you in this room believe, that Paula went beyond her duty, beyond the call of duty, and the family will be forever grateful to you, Paula, and we thank you very much.
Finally, I'd like to ask Miyoshi Neal to the podium to receive her award. She received the Career Zoom Kansas Success Award recently from the Kansas Post-Secondary Technical Education Authority. And this is an award that's given to graduates who are enjoying career success in their chosen field. In the nomination letter written by Professor Richard Rowe, who is our Metal Fabrication Department Chair, he says that, hands down, Miyoshi is the best welder he's ever tested. Her welds are always perfect, and they look as if they were done by a machine, as a matter of fact. She came to our program as a young unwed mother, and she was determined to carve out a better life for herself and for her child. She worked full-time while she was going through the program, received her associate's degree, went on to get her bachelor's degree as well, came back and is teaching in our Johnson County Community College BNSF welding program. Concluding his letter of nomination, Professor Rowe says that students consider her to be one of the best instructors they've ever had. She's amazing and inspirational and an incredible woman and a very non-traditional job. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And that concludes awards and recognitions.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If I might. On behalf of the college and everyone here at the college, I'd like to thank Karen and Madeline for their great volunteer efforts to Paula, for her really outstanding, beyond the call of duty, efforts. Congratulations to all three of you. Our college is a special place because of individuals like you. We really appreciate all that you do. To Miyoshi, I'd just like to say congratulations as well, and to let you know that you were also recognized today at the Board of Regents meeting, and congratulated and recognized not only us being a Johnson County Community College graduate, but then all of the accolades that were mentioned by Dr. Grove as well, so we congratulate you as well, and thank you for, truly do exemplify why this college is a special place. We do appreciate it. Thank you.
And I know that our esteemed board member, John Stewart, has taken some welding classes, and I don't know whether you've had the benefit of Ms. Neal's instruction or not, but if you have not, it sounds like that's too bad.
I wish I would have, because my welds were never described as machine.
Hi, thank you. Congratulations to everyone. And Mr. Carter, are you ready with your lobbyist report?
I am. Well, good evening. You'll recall that last month, when I was before you, a good portion of my report addressed the anticipated tax policy discussion that we know will be occurring over the course of the next months and the ensuing legislative session. This month's report also contains significant information that is beginning to be unveiled about the tax policy debate that will be undertaking. And I would anticipate that each month, I'll be devoting a significant portion of time to this very issue. It's not one that's easily understood, given all of the complexities and all of the pieces that are going together to make it work, and we still don't know what all of those pieces are. However, some of the rhetoric and rumors are now beginning to take shape. And at a recent event in Wichita, the governor gave a glimpse as to what he believes his proposals will be looking like. He didn't release specific metrics or components that make up his tax policy plan, but he did indicate that the key to the proposal is reducing and eliminating the personal income tax at the Kansas level. That will certainly have a number of implications. It's yet to be determined whether or not that will be a phased-out system of the personal income tax in Kansas, or whether it will be an all-out repeal or elimination. I would hazard a guess that they cannot do it as a full-on elimination in one year, and so we'll probably see a multi-year plan proposed and debated, where we're talking about what happens over the course of three to five years of eliminating the personal income tax. The governor and the people that are trying to get their arms around it to propose these tax policies are relying heavily on Arthur Lafer, who was a Reagan-era economist, and you may be familiar with the Lafer curve that made him famous back then. And the theory behind his plan is that tax cuts lead to growth that ultimately creates more income for government than it had when it was at a higher rate. The policy group that's reviewing the tax proposals is also relying pretty heavily on a KU economist and researcher, Art Hall. That is someone who you've probably heard me talk about before, when talking about studies and/or proposals that relate to a conservative economist's point of view. Not everyone's on board, and that's probably no secret. It's a little bit difficult to be on board when you don't know what all the details are. But when the governor held one of his economic summits in Overland Park recently, he was questioned, or there were a number of local businesspeople who were apprehensive about what diminished personal income tax returns at the state level would do to the overall budget at the state. That's a great question, and one that we'll be talking about throughout the course of the next legislative session. The concern is that when you reduce taxes in one area, they are frequently pushed to another local unit or another body of government and are increased in other areas. Specifically, the ag sector is very concerned, as they rely heavily on land to produce their income, and that is one area that, in states that have a low personal income tax, they have much higher property taxes, so that is certainly one area that we could see increase. I think we'll also be talking about the sales tax exemptions on services. I don't see that argument really going anywhere. I've talked to the tax chair, the House Tax Chairman, about that issue specifically, but it is one issue that will come up, and it will draw a number of people to the Capitol on the day that they debate that particular component of the proposal. The same group that the governor addressed and began to sort of unveil some of the tidbits of his tax policy proposal is undergoing a fundraising effort of around $500,000 to wage a full-on campaign. It'll be on TV, it'll be on radio. The ads will be targeted towards businesspeople, Tea Party groups and affiliates, and it will begin to convince people that this is the way to go as far as tax policy is concerned in Kansas. So there is a lot yet to occur, I think, that we'll begin seeing Secretary of Revenue Nick Jordan traveling the state and unveiling more of the details than what were released at the Kansas Policy Institute's annual meeting last week. Turning to revenues, and again, this is a bit of good news, the revenues trended up two months into the state's fiscal year. Revenue predictions at the end of August were $16 million ahead of projections. That, again, puts us on schedule to end the fiscal year 2012 in the next season at around $200 million in the bank, if things continue to go according to plan. The Board of Regents, at their meetings this week, discussed their funding request or their proposal, and the initial proposal was set out to be about a $60 million request to the legislature this year. The proposal was winnowed down in the final discussions, and so it's going to be closer to $48 million. And you can see in your notes that I prepared that 40 million of that would go to state universities. The 20 million requested for community colleges and technical colleges was scaled down to 8 million, and it was not requested in the form of a multiple-year commitment, it would be just a one-year, a one-year request. So we will be seeing what happens. That will be the budget proposals that are submitted to the governor's Budget Office, as well as the official position of the Board of Regents. With regard to redistricting, again, I won't go into a lot of details there, but I would like to report that there were about 80 people that attended the Congressional Redistricting Town Hall that was held on campus here. The meeting was September 2nd in the Polsky Theater. Not a lot of controversy at that particular meeting, but hold on to your seat, because come September 30th, next Friday, I believe that the meeting in Kansas City, Kansas, and Leavenworth will produce some fireworks. You'll recall that I reported early on that there is a discussion of a congressional district that would capture all of western Kansas, run along the north border of the state, and run down and capture Wyandotte County. You can be certain that folks in Wyandotte County will be lined up to testify on the 30th of October. Similarly, the remaining town hall meetings will be out in western Kansas, and I would imagine that those folks would have something to say about what the makeup of their district looks like as well. This all sort of comes to a head, then, when you start talking about the 2012 elections. We've already got, we already have several folks who have indicated their intent to run or have filed to run. Specifically, there are a number of sitting senators at the state level that are targeted, several here in the Johnson County area, to name a few of those that have already indicated their intent, or who have received a challenger, rather, I'll just name the incumbents. Senators Vicky Schmidt in Topeka, Tim Owens in Overland Park, John Vrattle-Liwood, and Steve Morris all have challengers that have either filed or indicated their intent to file. We know of at least four others where the discussion at least has been tossed about, but no one has formally declared or indicated their formal intent to run. There will be an effort to unseat a number of senators in the Senate body, as you are aware, is considered more moderate when you compare the two bodies, the House and the Senate, at the state level. And there will still be districts that are changing. So some people have filed. That could be interesting to see what occurs if their Senate district in which they filed has boundaries that move. There will be a number of folks, and there are a number of folks who have already filed for election in the House that could face the same and likely would have more of an issue with regard to state boundary redistricting. An event came together very quickly here on campus, and just after the Labor Day recess, Senator Moran's office contacted us and asked if they could use our facility to host a business roundtable. And approximately 21 people came to campus on Monday morning, the 12th of September, to sort of just chew the fat with the senator. It was a very interesting meeting. I would say that there was a lot of good sharing and transparency in the room, and that was exactly what the senator had asked for. The great news for us is that the offices like that are turning to us to look to host those types of events, and the senator indicated his appreciation for the use of the event, and that he would like to host additional business roundtables like that on campus, so we're looking forward to that. The final thing that I would indicate that is not in your printed version of the report would be that we have finalized the dates for the legislative breakfast and lunch series that we've done. I add the word lunch because we react to the feedback that we receive from the legislators that attend, and so we'll be scheduling a couple of lunches, as well as a couple of breakfasts, to accommodate the schedule requests that have been made to us. Terry Schlisch will be contacting you or by email to let you know what those dates are, so that you can confirm your interest to participate based on your schedules. But just very quickly, November 15th will be a lunch, December 6th is a lunch, December 7th and 8th will be breakfasts.
I'm sorry, can you run through those again?
Sure. November 15th will be a lunch, December 6th will be a lunch, and then December 7th and 8th will be breakfast events here on campus, and we typically hold those in the Bodcare Conference Room over across campus. So I think I would stop there and see if there are any questions.
Ellen, trustee Muzel.
Could you get to us information about the percentage of the Kansas general fund budget that is made up by personal income tax revenues and then corporate income tax revenues? You may have those off the top of your head, but it'd be interesting to know those numbers because there's been a, the initial plans, I thought, was to take corporate because there's been a, the initial plans, I thought, was to take corporate income tax down to zero, and now it seems like there's more emphasis on personal income tax, and those are two pretty large numbers in the budget. And so I think it'd be helpful to me if I knew what those, how those correspond to the rest of the state budget, because if you don't have the money, you don't have it to spend on prisons, roads, or education, or whatever.
That is correct. I don't have those numbers off the top of my head. I do know that the corporate number is considerably smaller than, than the personal number. I will get those for you based on the most recent data that we have for, for both this fiscal year and what they look like for, for last fiscal year. But you're correct, that is the concern, is when you remove those dollars, whether it's by a phased, phase-out plan or all at once, what do you do to replace those dollars? Interestingly, that was one of the questions that was asked at the, at the economic summit in Overland Park, and, and it was also a question that was asked by one of the, the people sitting around the table at the Governor's Council on Economic Advisors, this, this sort of handpicked group that replaces Kansas Inc. that, that used to be run by Stan Alrich. He still will run this, this particular group under the umbrella of the Department of Commerce. And one of the, one of the participants in, in that group asked the same question of, of the budget director. How do you plan to replace the revenue when you, when you cut the revenue? And I don't think that was a question that they, they probably were, were hoping would be asked or would have to address, and their dance card was full by the end, end of the answering period, but I'd be happy to get those numbers.
Any other questions?
Mr. Carter, with regard to the, the state senate races, would you characterize the opponents that you mentioned as members of the opposing party or different elements within their own parties?
No, I would say that the ones that we know to date are conservative Republicans challenging those that are termed moderate Republicans.
Do you know other questions?
I might just comment, you talk in here about the state revenues being up after the first two months of the fiscal year. I guess I don't find a lot of comfort in that, that that's going to be a trend, and I don't know what you're hearing, but with the agriculture, the drought that's in the state, that hadn't shown up yet, and, and energy prices are dropping, so I have a feeling that by the end of the year we'll be fighting that again, and there won't be a surplus. It'll actually be a deficit where they're going to require some more adjustments in budgets.
I would not argue with you one bit, and while I'm not an economist, those particular numbers that have shown the uptick are directly related to sales tax, and specifically in the month of August, you see a lot of shopping as it relates to back-to-school. So I think that's a fair analysis.
I have, I have a quick question, Mr. Chairman. I keep hearing conflicting reports about this state income tax issue, and maybe, I'm hoping that you know the answer, which is why I'm asking you the question. These nine states, is it nine states that have no state income tax? I have heard that those states never had it, that there has been no state that had the income tax and then phased it out. Is that, is that true? Is that half true?
I can't, I can't speak specifically to the number of states and/or how their status arrived at not having a personal income tax. I can say though, however, that in those states, they do have in some cases either a higher property tax or a greater significance in the amount of natural resources that that state produces, which then provides an income that you don't see in, in other states, such as natural gas or oil production or coal production, depending on, on the location of the state. But I'm sorry, I can't specifically answer the, the historical aspect of the question that you asked.
All right, thanks.
All right, seeing no other questions, thank you, Mr. Carter. We'll turn now to the committee reports and recommendations and begin with the management report, and Trustee Stewart.
I'm filling in for Chairman Drummond, who chairs that management committee, and he's at a, an event for TLC tonight, raising money for TLC, so hopefully he's having a successful night there. Management Committee met on September the 8th and went over a, had an extensive agenda and went over a number of items, and we have some to bring forward today, tonight for the board. There are nine recommendations that the board needs to take action on, and the first six of them are annual or, or renewal of annual contracts, and I'd like to lump those all together if, if that's okay with the board, and I'll read the, you can see in the, in the minutes of the meeting, the more detail on there, but I'll read you the recommendation. It's a recommendation of the management committee that the board trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the following. Prime vendor for food and food supplies to Cisco Food Services of Kansas City not to exceed $800,000. Temporary employment services to A1 careers at $90,000 and apprentice personnel at $97,500. Nortel telephone switch maintenance to Allegiant Networks not to exceed $63,504. Solid waste disposal to Deaf and Ball Industries not to exceed $65,000. Bulk fuel to McEnany Oil Company not to exceed $90,000. And painting to TMP not to exceed $50,000. And again, those are renewals of contracts, so they've been reviewed and bid out and, and continue to provide services for the college, and I think we've had good experience with all those. So I will make that motion.
Second.
All right, we have both a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion's pass.
The seventh recommendation is purchase of three passenger vans, and these three vans will replace three vans and one sedan. Replaced vehicles will be traded in, and their trade-in allowances are reflected in the total bid expenditure, and this is, recommendation is addressed on page eight in the board packet. And it's a recommendation of management committee that the board trustees accept the recommendation of college administration to approve the low bid of $50,130 from Shawnee Mission Ford, Inc. for passenger vans, and I'll make that motion.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have both a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, just, just for my own clarification, what factors go into determining whether a van is up for no longer use? Is it mileage? Is it condition? Or is it all of the above?
All of the above.
Thank you.
Any other further questions or discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Recommendation number eight is we have one sponsorship to present this evening. Sponsorship is in support of the Greater Kansas City Chamber of Commerce's 124th Annual Dinner on November 22nd at the Hyatt Regency Crown Center. This one, recommendation is addressed on page 10 in the board packet, and it is a recommendation of the management committee that the board trustees accept the recommendation of college administration to approve $3,000 for the Greater Kansas City Chamber of Commerce, and I'll make that motion.
Second.
All right, we have both a motion and a second. Any discussion or questions? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
The final recommendation is one that we've discussed a little bit last month and brought back, and that is relating to publications and public notices and the fact that some publication is no longer in existence, so we, we want to make sure we have some, we have designated, and now two, a, a one and then a backup to use because we don't know what's happening for sure with our newspaper industry, and we want to make sure we're covered for this. But so, this is a recommendation of the management committee that the board trustees accept the recommendation of college administration to also designate the Shawnee Dispatch and Tri-County News as official newspapers of the college. That publication constitutes legal notice on behalf of the board of trustees. That's in addition to the legal record, so straightforward motion, I'll make that motion.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
I'll just kind of comment, you have your capital acquisitions and improvements report, page 24 and 25. Rex Hayes continues to do a good job of overseeing that and updating the committee on those each month. And we're looking forward to the ribbon cutting at the Olathe Health Education Center on October 6th, and I guess the significant news there is we came in a, a million dollars under budget on that project, so that's good news, that's maybe a sign of the economy, and people are a little hungrier when they're bidding on these projects, so we get a little benefit from that. And the Hospitality and Culinary Academy is in the planning stages, and everything is moving forward on that. Also had the IT infrastructure plan update, it was prepared by Denise Moore, and that's on page 26 and 28, and there, there's a lot going on, and I, I know Denise, Denise knows that, but you sat in that committee and you listened to all the, and you go through this report and listen to all the things that are going on. We got a lot going on, and Denise and her team are doing an outstanding job of keeping the college on the cutting edge and, and protecting the college's infrastructure and, and security, so just personally, I feel very comfortable with Denise in that role and what she's doing, so that concludes my report.
Trustee Stewart, thank you. We'll move then to the learning quality report, and Trustee Sharp.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We met on September 7th, and I think it was a Thursday instead of a Monday. We moved to the meeting due to the holiday, but had a number of updates from a couple of different departments, some really good presentations. We discussed the Early Alert Program, which is a cross-functional, multidisciplinary team that's been put together to really find those kids that are in trouble before they're in trouble, academically anyway, where you have teachers from a different, from a number of different areas coming together and talking about, you know, places and where they see problems coming, because one teacher may see it, another may not, they may be able to correlate stories between the two. And I thought it was a really good presentation and a good way to address student achievement before we have any problems. We also had a great presentation by the Cosmetology Program, and we had a number of their teachers come in and talk to us about the various academic programs, the number of students that they send through the program, and obviously their amazing services, and I would encourage all of you to go get a mani-pedi or a brow wax or a facial or whatever at a really good deal, and help students learn. I mean, you know, tough job. They're going to be instituting a number of programs to help students in terms of customer service, learn how to be better at their jobs when they're out in the, in the, in the real world. We, let's see, talked a lot about continuous quality improvement, CQI, which was a really great presentation. Sandra Warner talked about the programs, the seminars she's been offering to faculty to help expand the CQI concepts throughout the, throughout the institution, of really putting together plans, being able to measure those goals, and coming back and improving based on those measurements. So she did a good job of that. What else did we talk about? And there was a couple, there were a couple of curriculum changes. Statistics and psychological research was, was added, as well as an introductory biology class for non-majors, which there are some issues with lab, lab-only biology classes versus lecture-only biology classes, so they fixed that, some of those issues. Dr. Day reported that fall head counts were up by half a percent. Credit hours were down half a percent, but I don't know if we, if we have 20-day numbers.
20-day numbers are right about the same place, just about 0.8% up in head, I mean, head count and just a little bit down in our FTE, our student credit hours.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Callaway. And the Tobacco-Free Campus Initiative is going very well, a lot of people talking about it. I love it as I walk through campus, and you don't have to gasp for air before you head out, outside and walk through the, the haze. The next quality, Learning Quality Committee meeting is scheduled for Monday, October 3rd in the Lidl Room, GEB 141 at 8:00 a.m. My report.
And just to clarify, are you implying that any of the board members need brow waxing?
I'm not going to name any names, because you know who you are.
This happened last time I got a brow wax. Better college.
I don't know if they can help you.
Yeah, that was at, that was at a different college, it wasn't here, right? Okay. All right, thank you, Trustee Sharp. All right, Trustee, Dr. Cook, Human Resources, please.
Human Resources did not meet in September, so we have no report.
All right, thank you. Moving then to the President's Recommendations for Action, we'll begin with the Treasurer's Report and return to Trustee Stewart.
On page 33 is the Treasurer's Report for the month of July. July was the first month of the fiscal year, so it only covers one month, and I guess in August, skipping through July, in August we received $10.6 million state grant payments, so that will show up next month, but not much to show in that one month of the fiscal year. But it is a recommendation of college administration that the board trustees approve the Treasury Report for the month of July 2011, subject to audit, and I'll make that motion.
Second.
All right, we have both a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Trustee Stewart, does that conclude your?
That concludes the Treasurer's Report. Just comment, whenever I see Bob Prater's signature on the Treasury Report, I'm assured it's going to be accurate and well-done, because Bob does a great job for the college, and want to mention that.
All right, thank you. Well deserved. All right, Dr. Callaway, your monthly report to the board.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and just to Mr. Stewart's, Trustee Stewart's comment, Jill Sopchak and I don't sign unless Bob signs it. We look at, Bob, Bob does do a great job, and we're very appreciative of the good things that he does for our, our college and our students. And to that point, just a note and a thanks to the budget unit heads across the college. We did complete the fiscal year last year spending between 91%, 92% of the budget, which is really good news for us, along with some of the reductions that we knew were forced to make because of tax value assessment going down, and we, we cut, as you'll remember, about $5 million of the budget last year, but we still finished with all those cuts between 91% and 92% of expenditures. That's a really good piece of news because it allows us to carry some additional funds into this year, which we also know will be a tough year. So congratulations to the finance team, but also to all of our budget unit heads. Number of things I just point out today for my report, and thank Trustee Sharp for her mentioning the Early Alert Program. It's one of the college initiatives around student success and retention. Been working very hard on that program, and congratulate Dr. Reinhardt and her team, Dr. Kovak, and, and certainly the 12 faculty and, and counselors and staff who are in Dr. Day's team, who are part, become part of that triage team that helps us support students who may be at risk or finding themselves in trouble. It's, you know, for us, another one of those safety nets that we think will really help us with our retention. As you know, even though we've reduced our cost per FTE by a pretty significant margin over the last three to four years, our retention numbers have gone up, and we think that a lot of that has to do, and our student success numbers have gone up as a result of, we think, a lot more engagement by our faculty in the classroom, our counselors, and other folks outside the classroom, and programs like Early Alert and Dream Johnson County, so we're going to continue working on those efforts. We think it's a great investment in our students, and we'll continue to see our retention and student success numbers go up. Yesterday, we were pleased to host an event with St. Luke's Hospital where we had Dr. Carmona in, who was the 17th Surgeon General of the United States, served as Surgeon General under President George Bush and Second George Bush, and did a great job. Dr. Carmona is now a faculty member at the University of Arizona, and was brought in by our colleagues at St. Luke's as they were meeting with about 100-plus, 130 or so employers from around the region, interested in how we can all work together to keep health, healthcare costs down, and a lot of discussion related to preventative medicine and, and supportive mechanisms like employee wellness programs. So he did a great job for us and had a great turnout for that, and thank our, our colleagues at St. Luke's South, particularly Kathy Howell and her team, who supported that program. Reminder that the 28th of September will be the State of the College address. I'll be providing that at 3:00 p.m. at the Polsky Auditorium, and if your time allows, we invite you and all the community to that event. Look forward to a discussion related to innovation Johnson County and, and hopefully the, the event will be well-attended by our community. Melody Blowbound from our Public Information Office has put out the first editions now of the JCCC news, and if you're interested in, in being put on the distribution list of that electronic newsletter. interested in, in being put on the distribution list of that electronic newsletter and the like, just contact either Julie Haas or Melody, and they can get, get you onto that list, either board members or anyone in the community. Had the opportunity in the last couple of days to spend more time than you'd ever want to spend with the Board of Regents and in discussions, as Dick Carter shared with you, related to budgets and the like, and also articulation and transfer. We had a great meeting yesterday, and then turned around and had another meeting there today with, with our university and community college colleagues. And as Dick reported, the initial request that was presented for $20 million, which was the first year of, three years phase in of the funding of the tiered formula for career and technical education, was reduced from twenty to eight. We had a lot of discussion about that. And part of what I had to say this afternoon, when we met with the Regents, was we had, we had seen approvals for a host of issues in support of KU Med Center and designation for their cancer designation, and also Kansas State University and their veterinary medicine program's support of the activities that are happening through the Johnson County Education Research Triangle. And I reminded the Regents and folks in the audience, including the Presidents and Chancellor, that part of the reason that we were so supportive of that activity was, we always felt that the college would be an equal benefactor, even though we didn't receive any of those funds, because of the responsibility and we thought the opportunity to continue to train allied health and nursing professionals. And the best way for us to get that done was to also get the support from them related to equal support that they're providing to those entities, to the college, colleges for trained nursing and allied health professionals. We did have a good discussion and debate around that, and they've brought forward their plan. We'll see where it goes. They're hoping to keep numbers realistic, and we're worried that the numbers will reduce down from eight million to the community colleges. And our concern, quite frankly, is when you divide eight million dollars up among nineteen community colleges and seven technical colleges, the number gets pretty small, although it's, the funding for that is based on the student FTE, and you would remember then that about twenty percent of any of those new dollars would come to us because of, we generate about twenty percent of that for student performance. So, we're keeping our fingers crossed that we keep the number at eight million, and we'll see where that goes. And then finally, I'd just like to recognize that we have a new doctor in our midst. Trustee and Chairman Weiss completed his, his defense of his dissertation yesterday?
Tuesday.
Tuesday, and so we'll be changing his nameplate to Dr. Weiss, and we congratulate him. We know all the other things you have going on to, to work and complete your doctoral degree is really quite an achievement. We congratulate you on that. We should probably give him a round of applause.
And thank you. And for those of you that don't know, my doctoral degree is in higher ed administration, and it's given me a much deeper understanding and appreciation of the complexity and the hard work that all members of this college community do, just as an everyday fact of doing business. So, thank you again for all the hard work that you do.
We congratulate you, trustee Weiss and Dr. Weiss. And then finally, I would just share with the board that we continue to meet with our friends and colleagues in the housekeeping department. We've, we've been holding regular meetings led by Dr. Grove and Mr. Hayes, and visiting with them related to an internal proposal on what we would be looking at if we, if we maintain our housekeeping services internal. There have been some challenges back and forth. As you know, right now, we're right about at the industry standard for personnel, and there's some belief on the part of the custodial crew that we're down five or six people than it would ever be possible to keep this facility clean. We're just not in a position to add five or six custodial positions, and so we have some discussion, debate on that, and maybe, you know, some of the information we heard today is a result of, you know, we know that that's going to be a real challenge for us. In addition, we do have an, every expectation, as we had indicated, that we're going to bring forward a recommendation to Management Committee in October, and then for final decision at our board meeting next month. We're right on target with that agenda. And also, we've been visiting with our leadership team, and yesterday had decided we were going to do another town hall meeting with all of the, the staff from the housekeeping. So, we do continue to keep them informed. They don't always agree with the data that we're gathering and the information we're finding and the like, but I would just commend Dr. Grove and Rex Hayes for their work. We know it's been difficult, and not everyone always agrees, but we're going to continue to work on that, and we, we do truly value that group. They've done a great job for us, and we have to gather the information, and then we'll be bringing that forward to this board. So, we're right about on the timeframe that we shared with them and with you, and we do plan to have, and know we'll be fully prepared for a recommendation to Management Committee in October. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report. I'd answer any questions you might have.
Yes.
Chairman Weiss, thank you. Well, with, with all due respect to the presentation that was made during petitions and communications whereby the comment was made, the brand is being diminished. I believe in your report, Dr. Callaway, there's just evidence after evidence of faculty and staff and programs that distinguish themselves. Under the education section, where we talk about early childhood, in fact, there's two references, that the early childhood program has a very, what I would call, significant waiting list for people to get their children into the program. But under the education report, we talked about Johnson County Community College was one of eight colleges that were granted this, this grant to focus service and learning, and only one of eight institutions received that grant. I apologize for not remembering how many colleges there are in the nation, but if there are nineteen in Kansas, I'm assuming that there's several hundred.
It's about, it's about twelve-hundred community college districts nationwide, somewhere around sixteen-hundred campuses.
So, I point out that here's but one example of being recognized as one of eight in that large group for the early childhood program, I think is quite significant. And then over under the psychology section, it was, it came to my attention with the speaker coming in, Preston Washington, who's a Cherokee Freedman. There was a, quite an article in the Kansas City Star, I think in the last few days, about that topic. So, I really applaud the college and staff for trying to reach out and provide diverse opportunities for our, for our students and our citizens. And I, I just, again, am, I'm very pleased with the large number of outstanding, outstanding events that are going on, on a daily basis here, that elevate the brand of Johnson County Community College locally, statewide, and nationally.
Thank you, trustee Cook. Any other comments or questions for Dr. Callaway? All right. I do not believe that we have any old business at this time, and I don't believe we have any new business either, unless anyone would like to bring forward something. All right. We'll move then to reports from board liaisons, and begin with trustee Dr. Cook with the Kansas Association of Communities College Trustees.
Well, I'm, I'm, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm honored and blessed to, to kind of ride the saddle that Lynn Mitchellson set. And Dr. Callaway and I had the privilege of traveling to Hiawatha on Sunday, September eleventh, for kind of a two-part meeting. We had a reception, opening meeting in Hiawatha at a really, one of their old buildings in downtown, which is their city hall that had been remodeled and renovated. And as we entered the room, there sat trust, former trustee Lynn Mitchellson and Alicia Mitchellson. And we thought that maybe Lynn just couldn't get out of the habit, but he was there, they were there as guests of Joyce Rush, who is on the board at Highland Community College, and longtime friends, and were visiting her, but, and she invited them to the reception we had that evening. Then went over to the city of Highland on Monday morning for our day meeting. Ken Van Blairicum from Pratt Community College chairs the Kansas Association of College Trustee Boards, and Dr. Callaway chairs the Council of Presidents for the state. And again, I will say that the, the expectation and the, the leaning ship on the leadership of Dr. Callaway is quite evident. I mean, a lot of the colleges and the presidents and the board members looked, looked to Johnson County Community College based on what Lynn had done, and also the work of Dr. Callaway. So, it's really an honor for me to be in that, in that position, to represent us on that board. Spent the morning with our individual meetings. I would say that the financial condition of KACC is in good hands and in good order. We then broke into small groups in the morning, and a facilitator that the KACC used last year, a couple of years ago, I guess, to set a strategic agenda was brought in, and we, we spent time in small groups. That, that carried over till late morning, when the board met individually and the presidents met individually, and then we had lunch together, and then we convened again in a strategic setting activity. We really came up with four initiatives to work on for a strategic plan, that being funding, advocacy, articulation, and marketing communication. And in that funding category, of course, the foundation is the, the 20 million tiered funding that Mr. Carter and Dr. Callaway have addressed, and the, but the KACC will continue to educate and work on that funding over the long term. Considerable time on advocacy, how can we work together? And by the way, back to the tiered funding, I, I believe that it was, it was quite significant that the nineteen colleges appear to be hand and glove in that, in that plan, in that format. So, if, if we have the nineteen colleges working together, that's, that's a significant step. And the interest to have a common message, and while we are quite different among the nineteen colleges with, with programs and constituencies, and they, they all are very interested in making sure we have a consistent, common message to the legislature. And talked about a number of things, and are working on a number of things to enhance that. The articulation, really came up with, with three main sub-bullets, and that's to support a plan to have a seamless transfer of credit hours of the associate's degree to all Kansas universities. And all the colleges, again, are very serious about getting that accomplished. Secondly, ensure a well-designed process of transfer of student credits. And then, hopefully, the colleges, the community colleges can come up with a common numbering system of coursework. And again, all are, are committed to trying to get that done. And the fourth, marketing communication, is how do we enhance, protect the brand of the importance of community colleges in the state of Kansas. So, all of us broke into subgroups and have assignments going forward, so we're looking forward to that work in the future. Our next meeting is December fourth and fifth, in Independence, Kansas. We did have discussion about where we meet, this whole geographic issue, and I think longer term, I think the dates have been pretty well set for twelve, but the idea would be that in February, we would meet in Topeka, when we have a day at the Hill, as we've had in the past. Spring would be somewhere in eastern Kansas, summer maybe western Kansas, and then the September retreat meeting would be in central Kansas. The National Legislative Seminar is scheduled for February thirteenth through the sixteenth, I think is on the calendar, in Washington, D.C. That's an ACCT event. And we, we had such a successful event last year as a late afternoon reception. And I think a lot of that credit goes to Mr. Carter, who really did a lot of work for KACC in arranging, getting all of the Kansas delegation and their staff to, to that event. So, we, we are planning to do something similar to that again this year. And for those of you that have not attended that, that legislative seminar, it's really a, a good one to attend, and you might want to put that on your calendar, February thirteenth, sixteenth of 2012. And with that, Mr. Chair, that is my report, and we're looking forward to December and, and going to Independence.
All right. Thank you, trustee Cook. Johnson County Research Triangle and trustee Stewart.
We, we're now on a every-other-month-meeting basis, so we did not meet since our last board meeting, so I really have nothing to report. Our next meeting is Tuesday at the K-State Innovation Campus, and just a couple items on the agenda, update on an audit report that we're going to get, and also a, I guess, a demonstration of the, the new website for J-Cert, so that anyone wants to attend that meeting, it's 7:30 a.m. at the Aletha Campus on Tuesday, September twenty-seventh.
All right, thank you.
Quick question.
Yes.
How are revenues coming in for that?
I think they're as, pretty much on target.
Back up to target?
Yeah, I think, I think they're still below, but they're not significantly below. So, it's based upon, obviously, the economy. It's not doing as well, but I think I've seen one number, and I think that would have been July's number, so maybe that's a little higher than normal. So, we'll, we'll probably get August's number at this meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. And trustee Muswell, do you have a foundational report for us?
I do, Mr. Chair. And the trustees, the Foundation Executive Board met last week, and then the Foundation Directors met this Tuesday. Primary focus on both of them was fiscal year 2011 report. At, for fiscal year 2011, which ended on June thirtieth, the Foundation assets were up 12% from fiscal year ten, at about 25.8 million, and they have now regained and slightly exceeded where we were before the economic downturn in 2008. So, the investment, investment growth for that fiscal year was very good. Since that time, the market has not been very good, so it, it's not, it's not as good for the rest of the time. One of the highlights, I think, that everybody learned was that scholarship distribution was up 39%. Over $911,000 actually got into the hands of students and the Foundation staff, and Dr. Day, and the administration's done a great job of matching kids to the, or matching students to the funds that are available, some of which have restrictions, and so you've got to find and make sure we get that out. But a 40% increase is pretty impressive. It's wonderful. It's also a challenge for the future. If we're going to do that every year, we need to keep raising more scholarship money and more endowment money over and over again. So, overall revenues were up 25%. And so, we received a report on the Culinary Center and the new building plan at the, at the Directors' Meeting. Some Enchanted Evening is almost sold out, and every time, now that I say that, I don't know if anybody's here but there, I think there were two tables left, so one table left now. And it's been very successful. It will honor the past, the first twenty-four Johnson Counties of the Year, and President Callaway and Marlene, our First Lady Marlene are the honorary chair couple for this year. The committee members, just so we all remember who have done such a good job in planning that, are Brad and Libby Bergman, Mary Birch, Mayor Mike Bame of Lenexa, Linda Carlson, Lewis and Laura Gregory, Cal and Lisa Kleinman, Pat and Beth McCowen, Ken and Nancy Mallard, Tom and Chaney Mitchell, and Tom served as the corporate sponsor chair of that committee, Lyle and Jan Pishney, Ryan and Jennifer Schneider, and Steve and Wanda Wilkinson. Steve is the president of the foundation for this year. That concludes my report.
All right. Thank you, trustee Muswell. The Collegial Steering Committee did not meet today, so I have no report from that, and so that would move us to the Faculty Association, and is Mr. Anderson here, hiding behind the pillar?
It's not a great view back there, either. Something that probably is not maybe high on your radar at this point in time, but it's coming up. We're going to be going into a contract negotiation here this, this, this coming year here, and I just want to announce that our team is getting close to being formed. I think we're maybe one person short of having it finalized. We've been doing some meetings over the past few weeks to get some issues of kind of focus that we want to bring forward this coming year. And there's been some preliminary talk with regard to starting early. We typically start in the spring, and then we tend to do like a sprint dash to the finish line to get it done, and so there's a possibility we could maybe see some movement going underway, maybe this, sometime even this fall. So, we're certainly open to that. And then, we had a meeting here recently with Dr. Korbe regarding the salary study, and we understand that the salary study is, is intended to look at three groups on campus, the administration, faculty, and staff, I believe. And we had a discussion with, with Dr. Korbe about that, and there was a recommendation from our group that if we're going to do the study, we, it would be our preference that the, the group would start with the administrative group first, as, as the process begins and continue that cycle over, over the next three years. And so, that's all I have tonight, a very short report.
All right. Any questions, comments?
All right.
Thank you, sir. That moves us to our second petitions and communications section of tonight's agenda. And once again, the petitions and communications section of the board agenda is a time for members of the community to provide comments to the board. Comments are limited to five minutes unless a significant number of people plan to speak. In that instance, the chair may limit a person's comments to less than five minutes. Presenters may choose to speak at the first or second petition section, but not both. And prior to beginning comments, we ask that you state your name, address, city, and state, and do we have anyone at this time that would like to address the board? All right, and seeing none, we will close the petitions and communications section for tonight's agenda. for tonight's agenda. And move to the consent agenda. The consent agenda is a number of items considered in one motion that are typically routine motions, and we will consider those as one motion unless there's anyone on the board that would like to pull any of the items or consider any of the items separately. All right, seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
My, my wife pointed out, and she was quite concerned, that under the HR addendum that we have hired John Hamm as the application architect, and whether he would continue filming Mad Men. Denise, can you answer that for her? Okay.
Okay. All right. Your wife was concerned that he would or would not?
She's concerned that he would not.
Okay.
I'm just glad the smarter one in the household is reading the agenda.
Thanks, Greg.
All right, any other comments, Snide or otherwise? All right, seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, and that brings us to, I believe we're going to have an executive session for this evening. Thank you. And I would like to entertain a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel matters of non-elected personnel in order to protect the privacy interests of the individuals to be discussed, and for consultation with an attorney, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship, in order to protect the privilege in the board's communications with its attorney on legal matters. And this session, I think, will start with 30 minutes.
At your pleasure.
All right, and no action will be taken during this session, and we would like to also invite our attorneys, Mark Ferguson, our staff attorney, Tanya Wilson, and Judy Korbe, to join this executive session, and I will entertain a motion at this time.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and, excuse me.
I may have missed something. Was Dr. Callaway part of that?
Not at this time.
We, okay.
Okay. All right, we will then break for executive session, and we'll start in approximately three minutes, and last until 6:45, when we will resume with the public section.
Bye, I'll break before we.
Probably a good idea.
I haven't been for a long time.
Academic types.
They don't have a lot, sometimes it, that's not.
Totally true statement.
The board has returned from a 30-minute executive session during which no action was taken. We are reconvening the open part of tonight's meeting. We have one additional item for the board to consider, and that is approval of Dr. Callaway's new contract. And so I will entertain a motion to approve the contract as it was presented to us.
So moved.
All right, I have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Both a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No, I'd like to explain.
Okay, proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted, I'm not opposing Dr. Callaway at all in any stretch. I'm opposing an overall increase in this position. I feel like this position is very well compensated. When you look at our Regents' counterparts, this position is compensated about equal to that of Kansas State University, which is a very large, huge campus, many PhD and masters and bachelors programs. In this environment, I have concerns about giving increases over and above our faculty increases when we've additionally cut millions of dollars out of our budget. It's a, it's a numbers, a numbers issue for me, and I feel like we're very, very grateful for the work that Dr. Callaway is doing. It is not a statement towards him at all, it's a position I feel like is very well compensated, and at this time, I can't support a significant increase in that, in that total compensation package. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, trustee Musel.
I probably voted out of the most ignorance of anybody, being new and not being part of the initial part of this process, but I would say that Stephanie is, I understand the concern about, about the dollars, because what I've learned in three meetings is that we watch our dollars very carefully. But the president of this university is a 24/7, 365-day-a-year job. When I look at the financial reports and see that we have $91 million in investments and a $200-plus million operating budget, and 21,000 credit students, and 15,000 non-credit, and 10,000, 8,000, 10,000 Burlington Northern, Santa Fe, and all of the things that go on, and I hear that the actual monetary compensation in here is really a 3% increase. Even in tough times, I have seen, I believe, this board is comfortable that Dr. Callaway has helped us meet our strategic goals in a very tough time, and for that reason, I could support that this year.
If there are.
I'm not sure I could have said that any better. Thank you, trustee Musel.
Okay. All right, we've, the comment section is over, and we have had a vote. I appreciate your comments nonetheless, and it looks like the motion has passed 5 to 1. So the motion has passed, and unless we have any other business to conduct this evening, I will adjourn the meeting.
That's got to be some kind of record during the executive session.
Seven o'clock. There you go, Musel might want to. You lost it.